Good evening, I am Todd Doyle, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'd like to welcome you to tonight's virtual meeting and public hearing of the zoning board of appeals. The required meeting agenda, application materials, and legal notice are all available on the town website. Because in-person attendance at public meetings is likely to increase the risk of transmission of COVID-19, this hearing is being conducted in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B and 7I. Will the zoning enforcement officer please call the roll?
Apologize for that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Angelo DiMatteo?
Here.
Jonathan Harris?
I said here, did you hear me?
I hear you now, thank you, sir. Michael Johnson?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alinda Morales?
Here.
Donald Neville?
Sorry, here.
Thank you, and Mr. Chairman Todd Doyle.
Here, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Pudlik, this is Todd Doyle, Chair again. For the record, I would like to note that we have a full quorum of the board. Board members and town staff are participating by WebEx. Members of the public can view the meeting live on West Hartford Community Television, or on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5, and Frontier TV Channel 6098, or at www.whctv.org. Meeting is also being recorded for on-demand viewing, which will be available on the town website. Because of the virtual format of this hearing, there are some special rules and procedures that I need to cover before we begin. First, I ask all participants to please mute the microphones on your devices when you are not speaking. Second, pursuant to Executive Order 7B, all speakers must state their name and title each time they speak. Also, I will ask members of the board and the applicant not to address other participants directly. Board and request for information must be made through the chair. In other words, after you state your name, simply preface the question or comment with "through the chair," and when you are done, I will recognize the person who is most appropriate to respond. Although these practices may feel rigid and awkward, they will ensure the meeting is conducted in an orderly fashion, and that members of the public who are listening can understand the discussion. I appreciate your patience. With that, will the zoning enforcement officer please read the legal notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. West Hartford Zoning Board of Appeals Legal Notice. The town of West Hartford Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a special meeting and public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 27, 2020, on the following. 90 North Main Street, Petition Number 03-20, Petition of Our Children's Center requesting a variance to Section 177-33E3, signs in connection with special use permits authorized by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, which allows a maximum sign area of 25 square feet and one sign per lot. Requesting a variance of 31.1 square feet, and for an additional two signs, in order to legalize existing legal nonconforming signs, excuse me, in order to legalize existing legal nonconforming signs, and for the installation of one 16-square-foot, double-sided, freestanding sign, per plans on file, R6 Zone. At these hearings, interested persons may be heard, or may submit written communication. The applications related to the items above are available for public review on the Zoning Board of Appeals website at www.westhartfordct.gov/gov/brdcom/zba/d default ASP. Current ZBA Agenda. Click Current ZBA Agenda, or by request via email to comment.tpc@westhartfordct.gov. Virtual Meeting Instructions. The public hearing will be conducted exclusively as virtual meetings in accordance with Executive Orders Number 7B and 7I issued by Governor Ned Lamont. The public hearings will be broadcast live on television on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast 5, and Frontier TV Channel 6098, and streamed live at www.whctv.org. Audio Comment. Any interested persons may participate in real-time by calling 1-408-418-9388, and using the following access code: 719-524-289. At 6:00 PM, participants using caller ID blocking will not be permitted to participate. Participants will be called on in the order in which their call was received. When prompted by the chair and/or moderator, participants will have the permission to speak on matters germane to the hearing. Written Comment. Any interested person may submit a written comment via email to comment.tpc@westhartfordct.gov. Written comments will be made part of the record at the May 27, 2020, public hearing, and posted on the town's website, in order to be included as part of the record. Comments must meet the following requirements. Comments must be received no later than 3:30 PM on May 27, 2020. The subject of the email shall be, application number, and address, ZBA, May 27, Public Hearing. The body of the email must begin with the interested person's full name and street address. Comments must be germane to the application in no longer than 500 words. This was posted on 5/15/20, and Todd Doyle, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and myself, Brian Pudlik, Secretary of the Board.
Thank you, Brian. As promised, because of the virtual meeting format, there are some special rules and procedures regarding hearings that I need to cover before we begin. First, phone access is intended only for members of the public who wish to actively participate and provide comments on one of the noticed applications. In this case, on noticed application 03-20, for 90 North Main Street. If you are interested in speaking on this item, please call 1-408-418-9388, and enter access code 719-524-289. If you are on the phone and do not plan to speak for this application, please hang up and watch live on television on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5, Frontier TV Channel 6098, or streaming at www.whctv.org. Again, if you do not plan to comment, please hang up your phone now, and instead, listen to the hearing on TV or Internet. For members of the public who are still on the phone, please do not mute your device. The meeting moderator will keep everyone's line muted until it is your turn to speak. If you mute your own line, the moderator may not hear your voice when he calls you for comment. Second, I would like to describe how the hand-raising process will work. Unfortunately, our conference technology does not allow us to identify individual callers by name. So when the public comment portion of the meeting begins, the moderator will randomly unmute one call-in line, and ask everyone to say their name at the same time. The voice that we hear will belong to the person whose line is unmuted. That person will then be asked to be recognized, that person will then be recognized by the moderator, and asked to restate their name and provide their street address. We will repeat this process until we have unmuted every phone line, and given every person an opportunity to speak. It's very important that you say your name each time you are prompted by the moderator. If the moderator unmutes a phone line and does not hear a voice after the prompt, that phone line will be removed from the conference. If you have called in, and are also streaming the meeting on YouTube or watching on TV, please silence your other device when you speak, otherwise, there will be an echo, because there is a slight delay in the TV and streaming broadcast. Third, I ask that all speakers keep their comments brief and germane to the application. Obscene, offensive, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Anyone who violates this rule will receive a warning, and if the conduct continues, I will ask the moderator to mute that person's phone line for the remainder of the meeting. If violation is egregious, that person will be muted immediately. Fourth, the public was provided opportunity to submit written comments on the application via mail and email. These comments have been published on the town's website as a PDF file, and are embedded on the online agenda. For the record, the zoning enforcement officer will now read the names of all those who submitted written comments. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just pull those up for us here. Bear with me here, just a moment. That only appears to be one of them, I know we have more than that. I'm having technical difficulties with outlook, you can just bear with me a second.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, this is the moderator, Todd DuMay. I do not believe we have any public comments for the first application on our agenda. I'll look to Brittany Birmingham, who has compiled those for visual confirmation.
Yes, that's correct.
So there are no comments for the first application on the agenda.
Thank you, team, I appreciate you guys helping me out there.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Members of the public are welcome to continue sending comments to comment.tpc@westhartfordct.gov. And those comments will be distributed to the members of the board, and also read into the record. Finally, I would like to outline for all attendees, rules of engagement, and how the board operates the public hearing. Those presenting or commenting should state their name and address for the record. Please spell your name. Board members may ask questions during the testimony of the applicant. All questions and comments will be directed through the chair, and only after recognition by the chair, including follow-ups. If feasible, the chair will have the members hold their questions until the end of the applicant's presentation, or the end of a logical break in the applicant's presentation. Following the testimony of the applicant, the public will have a chance to comment about the current application, and the following order in the manner previously described. On conclusion of the public's comments, the applicant will have an opportunity to address the opinions expressed. Upon conclusion of the applicant's rebuttal, and if there are no further questions from the board, the public hearing will be closed. It is the practice of the board to render a decision on an application the same night, following all items on the public meeting agenda. I'd like to conclude by thanking everyone in advance for your patience. This is our first virtual public hearing, and we're still learning from the experience. There are bound to be some bumps and glitches along the way, but we remain committed to the principles of open and transparent government. And with that, will the applicant please proceed with their presentation? Again, this is application number 03-20, 90 North Main Street.
Hear me?
We can hear you.
Perfect. My name is Michelle Lucan, and I'm the President of the Board of Directors at Our Children's Center, or as we call it OCC. OCC is located at 90 North Main Street, and I'm here today in support of our application for a variance, so that we can install a sign on the property. As we shared in our written application, in the addendum, the reason we would like to install that sign is to avoid some safety issues that we've noticed, and so that the sign can act as a wayfinding tool for us. And perhaps it will be helpful if I take a quick step back and share more about OCC. OCC is a small nonprofit daycare and preschool right in West Hartford. It sits on the corner of Fern Street and North Main Street, and our space is in the back of the First Baptist Church. We have an excellent relationship with the church, but we are an entirely separate entity, and the property has two separate entrances. So there's an entrance on the North Main side, and there's another entrance on the Fern Street side. OCC uses the Fern Street entrance as our primary entrance, and until now, we've only had a small portable sign on the Fern Street entrance, and it is difficult to notice when passing by. I would say it's difficult to notice even when walking by, and it's certainly hard to notice it when driving by. And because of that, visitors often miss the entrance. And what we've seen is that those individuals will then turn around in neighborhood streets, or take a quick K-turn, or turn around in private driveways, and in other cases, those drivers will swing quickly into the entrance. And obviously, this causes safety issues, but since I've been a parent there for the last six years, a board member for the past three or four years, one thing I wanted to highlight for you is that this is a particular issue for OCC, because many of our families walk to the center. It's a neighborhood childcare center, and it is not uncommon for our entrance on the Fern Street side to be lined with families at drop-off and pickup, and there will be children in strollers, or on bikes, or on scooters. And so for us, we really think this sign will be instrumental in helping us ensure our family's safety, and also the safety of those in our neighborhood and our larger community. And then I'd also just wanted to talk very quickly about what the sign will look like. We've included a rendering of the sign in our application, but the sign that we are seeking to install is very modest in size, that was intentional. It's a double-sided sign at just two feet by four feet, and the sign design is simple, clear, and streamlined. Our goal was to draw attention to the entrance, to help us avoid those safety issues, but our goal was to do this in a way that is in no manner intrusive or obstructive to the property. And then last but not least, I wanted to share that we have discussed the sign with the church. Like I said, we have a wonderful relationship with the church, and they have provided a letter in support of our application, which we have included and provided to you. And that, our application does address the existing signage that the church has. The church does have a sign on the Fern side also, and our location rendering shows where our sign will be, and like I said, the goal is to do this in a way that is not obtrusive. We think the sign is signed, sized properly, and we will place it to make sure that we do not block the church's sign, and that they look very nice together on the property. So thank you very much for considering our application. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
Mr. Chairman, the application, if I read it correctly, seems to talk about a request to maybe have two signs, or maybe to have a nonconforming one conforming. Could the applicant address that issue? Thank you.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, so our request is to add only one sign to the property for OCC. There's an existing sign on the Fern Street entrance that the church had placed, and so our application also looks to include that in the variance, so that it can conform with the town's requirements. But that sign is already there, so our application is just for the one sign for OCC.
Through the chair, this is a question for Brian. Brian, can you give a little bit of information with respect to the TPZ Commission's special use permit, whether the signs were contemplated as part of that? Can you give us any background on that? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may answer the question of Commissioner Neville. So the zoning ordinances allow for a single freestanding sign for properties that have a special use permit. This is such a property. It's had a special use permit for many years. It was relatively recently modified, I think probably sometime around eight years ago, and they didn't contemplate any additional signs at that point. I don't know exactly when the Fern Street sign was put in, but just judging by its appearance, it seems as though it's probably been there for quite some time. And so this variance is simply intended to legalize that additional sign that was installed on the Fern Street frontage, in addition to allow Our Children's Center their own sign on that frontage. So that's the situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the hearing? Hearing none, I would like to invite any members of the public who would like to speak in favor of this application. Mr. Moderator, if you could help us coordinate that effort?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is the moderator, Todd DuMay. We currently do not have any members of the public waiting to participate.
Okay, and any members of the public who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
Again, the moderator, Mr. Chairman, Todd DuMay, we do not have any members of the public online at all for this application.
Okay, thank you. I think that would therefore conclude this application. Thank you, Ms. Lucan, and we will deliberate after we hear the meeting two applications, and you're welcome to stay, or you can hang up and listen to us on one of the websites that we've already mentioned.
Thank you very much.
Ryan, would you like to read the notice for the next application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to. I'm going to go ahead and read the entire legal notice again, as we're required to do here. So West Hartford Zoning Board of Appeals Legal Notice. The town of West Hartford Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a special meeting and public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 27, 2020, on the following. 46 Pleasant Street, Number 04-20, Petition of E. Karen, requesting a variance to Section 177-20E, Obstructions in Yards, requesting a plus or minus 9% or 166 square feet, square foot variance to the 25% coverage limitation of the required rear yard for the construction of a new 22-by-28 garage, per plans on file, R10 Zone. At these hearings, interested persons may be heard or may submit written communication. The applications related to the items above are available for public review on the Zoning Board of Appeals website at www.westhartfordct.gov/gov/brdcom/zba/d default ASP. Current ZBA Agenda, or by request via email, to comment.tpc@westhartfordct.gov. Virtual Meeting Viewing Instructions. The public hearings will be conducted exclusively as virtual meetings in accordance with Executive Orders 7B and 7I issued by Governor Ned Lamont. The public hearings will be broadcast on live television on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5, and Frontier TV Channel 6098, and streamed live at www.whct.org. Audio Comment. Any interested persons may participate in real-time by calling 1-408-418-9388, and using the following access code: 719-524-289. At 6:00 PM, participants using caller ID blocking will not be permitted to participate. Participants will be called on in the order in which their call was received. When prompted by the chair and/or moderator, participants will have the permission to speak on matters germane to the hearing. Written Comment. Any interested persons may submit a written comment via email to comment.tpc@westhartfordct.gov. Written comments will be made part of the record at the May 27, 2020, public hearing, and posted on the town's website. In order to be included as part of the record, comments must meet the following requirements. Comments must be received no later than 3:30 PM on May 27, 2020. The subject of the email shall be, application number and address, ZBA, May 27, Public Hearing. The body of the email must begin with the interested person's full name and street address. Comments must be germane to the application in no longer than 500 words. And again, this was posted on 5/15/20, on behalf of Todd Doyle, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and myself, Brian Pudlik, Secretary to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. As promised, and with apologies in advance for what may seem to be repetitive, because of the virtual meeting format, there are some special rules and procedures regarding hearings that I will need to cover before we begin. First, phone access is only intended for members of the public who wish to actively participate and provide comments on the noticed application for application number 04-20, 46 Pleasant Street. If you are interested in speaking on this item, please call 1-408-418-9388, and enter access code 719-524-289. If you are on the phone and do not plan to speak on this application, please hang up and watch live on television on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5, Frontier TV Channel 6098, or streaming at www.whctv.org. Again, if you do not plan to comment on this application, please hang up your phone now, and instead, listen to the hearing on the TV or Internet. Thank you. For members of the public who are still on the phone, please do not mute your device. The meeting moderator will keep everyone's line muted until it is your turn to speak. If you mute your own line, the moderator may not hear your voice when he calls for comment. Second... Second, I would like to describe how the virtual hand raising process will work. Unfortunately, our conference technology does not allow us to identify individual callers by name. So when the public comment portion of the meeting begins, the moderator will randomly unmute one call in line and ask everyone to say their name at the same time. The voice that we hear will belong to the person whose line is unmuted. That person will then be recognized by the moderator and asked to restate their name and provide their street address. We will repeat this process until we have unmuted every phone line. It is very important that you say your name each time you are prompted by the moderator. If the moderator unmutes a phone line and does not hear a voice after the prompt, that phone line will be removed from the conference. If you have called in and are also streaming the meeting on YouTube or watching on TV, please silence your other device when you speak. Otherwise, there will be an echo because there's, there is a slight delay in the TV and streaming broadcast. Third, I ask that all speakers keep their comments brief and germane to the application. Obscene, offensive, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Anyone violating this rule will receive a warning and if the conduct continues, I will ask the moderator to mute that person's phone line for the remainder of the meeting. If the violation is egregious, that person will be muted immediately. Fourth, the public was provided opportunity to submit written comments on the application via mail and email as noticed by the secretary. These comments have been published on the town's website as a PDF file and are embedded in the online agenda. For the record, the zoning enforcement officer will now read the names of any persons who have submitted written comments. Brian?
Mr. Chairman, we have not received any written comments regarding this particular application.
Thank you. Members of the public are welcome to continue sending comments to commenttpz@westhartfordct.gov and those comments will be distributed to the members of the board and also read into the record. Finally, I would like to outline for all attendees rules of engagement and how the board operates the public hearing. Those presenting or commenting should state their name and address for the record. Please spell your name. Board members may ask questions during the testimony of the applicant. All questions and comments will be directed through the chair and only after recognition by the chair, including follow-ups. If feasible, the chair will have the members hold their questions until the end of the applicant's presentation or the end of a logical break in the applicant's presentation. Following the testimony of the applicant, the public will have a chance to comment about the current application in the following order in the manner previously described. On conclusion of the public's comments, the applicant will have an opportunity to address the opinions expressed. Upon conclusion of the applicant's rebuttal and if there are no further comments from the board, the public hearing will be closed. It is the practice of the board to render a decision on an application the same night following all items on the public meeting agenda. I'd like to conclude again by thanking everyone in advance for your patience. This is our first virtual public hearing and we are still learning from experience. There are bound to be some bumps and glitches along the way, but we do remain committed to the principles of open and transparent government. With that, will the applicant please proceed with their presentation? Mr. Karen, you may be on mute, so I'd like to ask you to unmute your phone.
Okay, now, great. My name is Ed Karen, K-E-R-N. I'm at 46 Pleasant Street. And I would like to replace my garage, my dilapidated garage, with a more modern garage for two reasons. Number one, the building is in poor condition. The front of the current garage leans forward from the bottom edge and is completely out of square. The concrete slab is cracked and pieces of the broken concrete have been removed and replaced by asphalt. The floor is built at grade and when it rains, water runs through the building. And secondly, I would like a garage that is a size more compatible with today's modern vehicles. My current garage is only 20 by 20 feet. I would like the new garage to be built primarily in the current location to maintain our usable backyard. Rear coverage allowance for our yard is 450 square feet. The new garage, 20 by 28, would occupy 616 square feet in the required 30-foot rear yard setback. Section 177-20E states that required yard setback area can be covered up to 25%. My proposal, I would be adding an additional 9% coverage, 34% total, for the rear yard setback.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Are there any members of the board that have questions for the applicant? Mr. Johnson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Through you to the applicant, I have a Google satellite vision of where I believe the garage would be built, but maybe it would be helpful just because I don't see it in the packet if you just outline exactly where the garage on the property is located.
Please remember to unmute your microphone, Mr. Karen.
Will do. Mic is down? Okay. Currently, my garage is at the extreme rear and left corner of my property. So I'm two feet from my neighbor behind me and two feet from the property of my neighbor to my left. And new garage would occupy the same space and then come forward an additional eight feet and to the right. Does that make sense?
Yep. And if I may, Mr. Chair, just one more question. So thank you for that clarity. That makes a lot of sense. If I'm looking directly in front of the house and then directly in front of the garage, it looks on the map that there is an additional, there are additional smaller properties, smaller structures that are in the back of your neighbor's property, and that doesn't appear to be a garage if I'm, unless I'm looking at it different ways. Is that a shed or did they have a variance at some point as well? Because it seems like it's getting close to your property there.
Are you talking about the, is there a pool in that yard?
There is, and there's something in front of the pool.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a small shed. There's a, they have a fence and it's transparent to me. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't bother me that it's that close. I, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure what you're asking.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just as a quick follow-up, I was just going to add that I wasn't sure if they, if you had noted they had received a variance at some point to put that structure in. I guess that's what I was trying to establish is if there was a precedent for a variance in that area.
I, to be honest, I, I, I don't remember ever being made aware that a building was being added and, I mean, I would have been told because it's so close to my property, right? And we were never communicated. But I don't even know when that went in. I mean, I don't know if it went in when the pool was built or it seemed likely that that's when it would have been built, but I don't remember.
Any other members of the board with a question for the applicant? Hearing none, Mr. Moderator, oh, Mr. Neville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the applicant. Sir, I also looked down your driveway and it, I may have been looking in the wrong house because now that we're talking this through, I'm a little concerned I was looking at the wrong house. But that there appears to be a two-car garage already there. Is your garage, is the applicant's garage two cars?
Yes, yes, it is.
And, and that is not sufficient size-wise for two cars?
Well, it's, first of all, it's 20 by 20, so it's a small garage. There's a lot of disrepair to the building. And rather than try to put in a new slab in an existing garage that's not in good repair, it seemed to me more cost-effective to build a new garage. And as long as I'm going to do that, I, I would appreciate at least kind of average size, which in my mind would be probably 24 by 24. But because my yard is so narrow, I really can't go that wide. So that's why I'm, I'm going to 22 feet and going to come forward a little bit. But the, but the garage as it is, is, is really not acceptable. I mean, you know, water running through it is relatively minor to the other problems with. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is it makes sense to fix it, but the money that I would put in to fix it would probably be more than halfway to a new garage.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Any other questions from members of the board? Hearing none, Mr. Moderator, do we have any, any comments lined up on this applicant from, from folks dialing in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the moderator Todd Dumey. We do not have any members of the public who have called in to speak on this application.
Okay, with no further comment, this application is, is closed. The public hearing portion of this application is closed. Thank you, Mr. Karen. We will deliberate on your application after all of the applicants are heard.
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, would you like to read the legal notice for the next application, number 05-20?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. West Hartford Zoning Board of Appeals Legal Notice, the town of West Hartford Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a special meeting and public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 27, on the following. 36 Haynes Road, petition number 05-20, petition of K. Massey requesting a special exception approval in order to maintain a customary home occupation for a cottage food business as an accessory to the residence per Section 177-49 for a period of one year per plans on file, R10 zone. As these hearings, excuse me, at these hearings, interested persons may be heard or may submit written communication. The applications related to the items above are available for public review on the Zoning Board of Appeals website at www.westhartfordct.gov.gov/brdcom/ zba/d default dot A S P. Click Current ZBA Agenda or by request via email to commenttpz@westhartfordct.gov. Virtual meeting viewing instructions. To the public, the public hearings will be conducted exclusively as virtual meetings in accordance with Executive Orders Number 7B and 7I issued by Governor Ned Lamont. The public hearings will be broadcast live on television on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5 and Frontier TV Channel 6098 and streamed live at www.whtv.org. Audio comment. Any interested persons may participate in real time by calling 1-408-418-9388 and using the following access code, 719-524-289, at 6:00 PM. Participants using caller, using caller ID blocking will not be permitted to participate. Participants will be called on in the order in which their call was received. When prompted by the chair or moderator, participants will have the permission to speak on matters germane to the hearing. Written comment. Any interested person may submit a written comment via email to commenttpz@westhartfordct.gov. Written comments will be made as, will be made part of the record on, at the May 27, 2020 public hearing and posted on the town's website. In order to be included as part of the record, comments must meet the following requirements. Comments must be received no later than 3:30 PM on May 27, 2020. The subject of the email shall be, application number and address, ZBA, May 27, public hearing. The body of the email must begin with the interested person's full name and street address. Comments must be germane to the application in no longer than 500 words. This was posted on 5/15/2020 on behalf of Todd Doyle, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and myself, Brian Pudlik, Secretary to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. This is the last time, thankfully, we'll have to read these, this summary of disclosures. As promised, the virtual meeting format, under the virtual meeting format, there are some special rules and procedures regarding hearings that I do need to cover before we begin. First, phone access is intended only for members of the public who wish to actively participate and provide comments on the noticed application for 36 Haynes Road, application number 05-20. If you are interested in speaking on this item, please call 1-408-418-9388 and enter access code 719-524-289. If you are on the phone and do not plan to speak on this application, please hang up and watch live on television on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5, Frontier TV Channel 6098, or streaming at www.whtv.org. Again, if you do not plan to comment, please hang up your phone now and instead listen to the hearing on TV or internet. For the members of the public who are still on the phone, please do not mute your device. The meeting moderator will keep everyone's line muted until it is your turn to speak. If you mute your own line, the moderator may not hear your voice when he calls for comment. Second, I would like to describe how the virtual hand raising process will work. Our conference technology does not allow us to identify individual callers by name. So when the public comment portion of the meeting begins, moderator will randomly unmute one call in line and ask everyone to say their name at the same time. The voice that we hear will belong to the person whose line is unmuted. That person will then be recognized by the moderator and asked to restate their name and provide their street address. We will repeat this process until we have unmuted every phone line. It is very important that you say your name each time you are prompted by the moderator. If the moderator unmutes a phone line and does not hear a voice after the prompt, that phone line will be removed from the conference. If you have called in and are also streaming the meeting on YouTube or watching on TV, please silence that other device when you speak. Otherwise, there will be an echo because there is a slight delay in the TV and streaming broadcast. Third, I ask that all speakers keep their comments brief and germane to the application. Offensive, obscene, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Anyone who violates these rules will receive a warning and if the conduct continues, I will ask the moderator to mute that person's phone line for the remainder of the meeting. If the violation is egregious, that person will be muted immediately. Fourth, the public was provided an opportunity to submit written comments on the application via mail and email. These comments have been published on the town's website as a PDF file and are embedded in the online agenda. For the record, the zoning enforcement officer will now read the names of all those who submitted written comments. Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start by, I'm going to start at the oldest message and then work my way up to the newest. So the first is, is from Rose Marie Durensis, and she writes in opposition. The, the remaining names are those that have written in support. Mary Gillian, Susan Hosmer, Jessica Esterson, Jennifer Bukite. Pardon me for a second here, just want to get this name. Matthew Delaney and Monique Delaney, Michaela Johnson, Lauren Kodiak, Lindsay Perkins, Luis Martinez, and finally Terry and Denise LaBord.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Members of the public are welcome to continue sending comments to commenttpz@westhartfordct.gov. Those comments will be distributed to the members of the board and also read into the record. Finally, I would like to outline for all attendees the following rules of engagement as to how the board operates this public hearing. Those presenting or commenting should state their name and address for the record. Please spell your name. Board members may ask questions during the testimony of the applicant. All questions and comments will be directed through the chair and only after recognition by the chair, including follow-ups. If feasible, the chair will have the members hold their questions until the end of the applicant's presentation or the end of a logical break in the applicant's presentation. presentation. Following the testimony of the applicant, the public will have a chance to comment about the current application in the following order in the manner previously described. On conclusion of the public's comments, the applicant will have an opportunity to address the opinions expressed. On conclusion of the applicant's rebuttal, and if there are no further questions from the board, the public hearing will be closed. It is the practice of the board to render a decision on an application the same night following all items on the public meeting agenda. I'd like to conclude by thanking everyone in advance for your patience. This is our first virtual public hearing, and we're still learning through experience. We remain committed to the principles of open and transparent government. And with that, will the applicant please proceed with their presentation?
Good evening. My name's Kevin Massey, owner of Small State Provisions. Thank you guys so much for allowing me to come forward with this. I'm requesting special permission to have customers pick up bread orders here at my home in West Hartford, Connecticut. Here at Small State Provisions, we sell naturally fermented sourdough bread. I should say, I sell naturally fermented sourdough bread along with small batch granola. This little micro bakery of mine was born out of the legislation passed in West Hartford that allows cottage food operations. Baking has been a passion of mine for my whole life. I currently oversee digital and social brand partnerships for a nationally distributed baking publication, and myself have been featured as a recipe writer in many nationally recognized food publications as well. I enjoy building community, and being able to operate out of my home allows me to connect with our community here in West Hartford, and doing that through food, it's something that I personally thrive on. Currently, all of my bread that I do is delivered to customers in and around the West Hartford area, and I bake three days a week, Sunday, Tuesdays, and Fridays. There will be a designated pickup point here at my home. Our property is uniquely situated in that we have a two-car garage located behind our house with a large driveway. Based on my forecast, there would be approximately 20 to 25 customers coming to my home on a weekly basis. All of the customers, many of which I have a personal relationship with, will be asked to park in the driveway when arriving to pick up their bread. Everything is prepaid, so they're not coming into my house, and I'm not operating a cash drawer or anything. Everything is just prepaid, so all they're doing is picking it up. Due to the limited nature of this operation, I am able to fully control the number of orders per baking day, and I'm obviously limited by the nature of my home kitchen. You can imagine it's not a very easy process to bake bread two loaves at a time. I'm requesting special permission so that I may continue to focus on building this micro bakery while also maintaining my job with the baking publication. As you can imagine, delivering bread every week takes a significant amount of my time. I take great pride in the neighborhood that I live in, and even commissioned a traffic study when we first moved in because I thought the people were driving too fast. If this zoning acceptance is approved, I will continue to show the utmost respect to my neighbors by ensuring that all customers have very clear guidelines on where to park and where their bread will be, and to be respectful of our neighborhood. Anyone who violates these rules that are in place will be terminated as a customer of Small State Provisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. I have two questions for you. The first is, this is an application for, as you say, cottage baking. And the question is this, I mean, if you're successful, only means that we're looking for, I mean, you could be a victim of your own success.
I could.
Do you have a goal of how many customers you would like to have? We currently have 25 now.
Currently, I have 20 to 25. Based on the way that the cottage operations work, I'm only allowed to go up to 25,000 in revenue. My longer term goal for all of this would be to eventually open a workshop space somewhere here in West Hartford where I can accommodate a larger volume of bread. But for right now, it's just about building, you know, a small following and being able to create some seed money to which I can then invest in the community down the road.
And so I note from your application that you, thank you for that, I note from your application that you have requested hours on four days a week from nine to six, which seems like a wide range of times. Would it be possible to have, to limit those hours by appointment, or is there a reason why you have such a long working day for?
Yeah, a lot of that. Well, first, since I submitted that application, I have shrunk down to three days a week. And a lot of that is really just based on how I'm baking because it does, you know, if I start at four o'clock in the morning, I might have bread ready to go at seven or eight. But absolutely, as I refine this process, I think it will be very important that the people that are coming, and again, I will have control of this because I can schedule all this, know exactly what their window will be. And since I've been doing this more now out of my house, I have a little bit better understanding of the flow. And I do think that if this is approved, you know, I could easily set the hours to be between, say, 12 and four, or 11 and four, so that it's a little bit more condensed.
All right. Thank you for that. And again, this is Todd Doyle, Chair. I have a question for you, Mr. Secretary, and it has to do with the customary home occupation. So traditionally, when we look at customary home occupations, we're looking at things like an acupuncturist, psychologist, maybe an accountant. My question here is whether the cottage baking, actual sales, putting aside the cottage baking, which I could see would be a customary home occupation, what about sales from the cottage baking? Is that covered in the ordinance?
It is. And we actually modified our ordinances slightly late last year, I believe, in order to accommodate cottage food sales out of the home on a limited basis pursuant to a special exception. So the cottage food statute allows for the, allows for the manufacturer of certain types of food and sale, but, and doesn't actually, it doesn't say whether there's a provision for, for in-home sales or not. And so, and so the baker under that could either, could either sell out of the home or not, or sell, you know, direct to a consumer at a farmer's market or something along those lines. But we, as part of our review of that statute, thought that it would make sense to have a little bit more oversight in a situation where a baker wanted to have customer pickup, and so we placed them under the special exception umbrella in order to have this additional process and oversight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. That's helpful. Questions from commissioners?
I have a question, Commissioner. Hi, this is Linda Morales. My question, Mr. Chairman, is can the petitioner, the applicant, explain a little bit better how the cars go in the driveway and come out, please?
Yeah, absolutely. This is Kevin Massey, owner of Small State Provisions. The cars will pull into the driveway, I would assume, unless they like to back in, they will pull in going towards our garage, and then they will back out into the street as if I were backing out of my garage. So it'll be a pretty standard back in, back out. We do not have a sidewalk on that side of our street. We actually, our driveway is on Nursery Drive, so we don't have a sidewalk at all. So there's not really any spot other than the street for pedestrians to be walking in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Doyle, this is...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Harris, and you may need to unmute your phone, sir.
Mr. Chairman, in response to Olinda's question, this is a corner lot. So the, anybody who visits the property turns off Haynes onto the, I don't know the name of the street, but the street that Haynes is the corner, it's the northeast corner, and then but turn into the driveway from there. It's a short driveway, probably no more than 30 feet or so.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioner Di Matteo?
Yes. Question for the applicant. See here in the notes in the application, there's 20 to 25 loaves, and your, you know, your intention is to move to a commercial location. When do you, when do you expect to hit that target date? And when you do get close to your target date, what kind of increased frequency of people picking up at your location you expect?
It's a really great question. This is Kevin Massey, owner of Small State Provision, speaking. Right now, since I incorporated, or since I started all this back in 2000, or back in October of 2019, I've generated just about 12,000 in revenue. So I don't anticipate reaching that 25,000 anytime soon. Again, I think it'll, you know, they're very clear with the 25,000 in revenue limit. And the way that I read all of this is that, again, it's, this is specifically what the cottage industry is designed to do, which is to give us an opportunity to build something so that when I do go into a commercial space, whether that's the end of this year, the end of next year, I will have the funds necessary to do that because I was able to start it here at the house.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Don Neville.
Commissioner Neville, please go ahead.
Thank you. Chairman, through you for the applicant, two questions. One is, I did hear that just the practical realities are reducing what he's doing to three days a week. I wasn't sure whether that meant his request was being reduced to three days a week. So if I could get clarity on whether or not there's a change to the application on that part, and then if you could ask the applicant to explain what steps are being taken to ensure that there is sufficient time in between customers coming. I understand it takes time to bake, and, but my guess is people, I apologize, my guess is people are going to want to pick up before work, after work, lunchtime. So practically speaking, he may end up with multiple people, and I think that's what people are concerned about, is making sure that there aren't multiple cars coming in at the same time. So if you could just ask the applicant to address those two issues, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Massey?
Yeah, this is Kevin Massey, speaking, owner of Small State Provisions. Thank you for those questions. What I have been, yes, so there is a small change to the application. When I filled that out, I was planning on doing four days a week, which in hindsight was nuts. I needed a day off, which has become Monday. And so, yeah, I plan on giving people, you know, a half an hour window because I too don't want multiple people showing up at the house because to me, that negates the very personalized experience of coming and picking up your bread. And I definitely am not looking to generate a line of traffic down the street. So again, it will be very controlled in a way that people know when their bread will be ready. And again, because a lot of these people are, you know, people that I know and I have a relationship with, I can send a text message to them and tell them their bread is ready. I have lots of different ways in which I can control so that we don't have, you know, three cars at once showing up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris, don't forget to unmute your phone, please.
Mr. Chairman, could you ask the applicant whether he intends to do more than 25 loaves a week, I think is what he's been talking about? And if so, what, what is, what's his maximum, and if he would agree to a maximum?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And Mr. Massey, it's a question that I've been formulating myself, which is, is 25,000 the goal? Are you not limited? You said you were baking two loaves at a time. What is your, what is your maximum capacity, or do you anticipate a maximum?
So let me, so this is Kevin Massey from Small State Provisions. Let me just clarify first that not, I do still plan to deliver some of the bread. So then I am not looking to shift to a fully pickup-only application. So there will still be me going out. A lot of people that don't live directly in this area, it's easier for me to just go and either meet them halfway or bring it directly to them. So I, you know, in terms of what my capacity is, again, I can bake, you know, if I'm baking 12 loaves on a day right now to deliver out, I'm baking those two at a time, and it takes me about six hours. So three days, you know, it's a mixed bag in terms of what the actual forecasted capacity will be. Again, keeping it all under the revenue cap is really what my eye has been on because I don't want to surpass that and violate the cottage legislation.
Thank you. Any other questions from the, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I'm not sure that that answered the question that I asked. What I'm looking at is how many, what's the maximum number of people in a day that would absolutely be the maximum?
I would say a maximum of 10 on a day, if it's a busy day.
For three days, 30 total.
No, I mean, I would say 20 to 25 over the week. If I have a maximum of 10 on one day, it would be less the following days. You know what I mean?
Any other additional questions from the commissioner? Commissioner Di Matteo, please don't forget to unmute your mic.
Yes, Chairman, question is, there isn't any employees, right? Just, Mr. Massey?
This is Kevin Massey, speaking, owner of Small State. Yes, it is just me.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to invite members of the public who are speaking in favor or in opposition to the application. Are there any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the moderator, Todd Dumey. We do have one member of the public who is online. I will unmute call in user number three. Call in user number three. When I unmute your line, please say your name when prompted, spell it, and state your address for the record. Caller number three, you are now unmuted.
Matthew Delaney, M.A.T.T.H.E.W. Delaney, D.E.L.A.N.E.Y. Address is 34 Haynes Road, West Hartford, 06117.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Please go ahead.
I'm calling in just to affirm the letter that I had sent in earlier to support and recommend approval for the petition for Mr. Massey. Essentially, Mr. Massey has always been a cordial, respectful, and conscientious neighbor of mine. I live right next door. He regularly touches base to see if there's anything he can do to help support us and our family. Mr. Massey goes out of his way to check in with neighbors before he prepares to have even landscaping done in his home, and even before he has gatherings at his home, pre-COVID-19, social distancing, of course. Mr. Massey has had a traffic study commissioned on our neighborhood out of the concern for the pedestrians of the neighborhood. As parents of two children, this is my wife and I, who attend King Philip Middle School and regularly walk home from school, we greatly appreciated the concern he demonstrated in concern with the neighborhood and the traffic thereof. Mr. Massey has repeatedly exhibited a great deal of concern for the well-being of our neighborhood and the people in it. We're completely confident that if he is granted this special exemption, he will continue the same level of dedication towards our neighborhood and the town of West Hartford. And in fact, we would be honored to live in a neighborhood that celebrated local businesses and brought the community closer together. So I just wanted to affirm my support as someone who's lived in the neighborhood and in the town for 11 years, and has quite an investment in the neighborhood, including my own children, who regularly ride their bikes up and down the street and walk to and from King Philip.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Delaney, are there any other callers wish to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? in favor or in opposition to the application?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any other call in users, uh, for this application.
Thank you. And any final questions from our commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there was a, there was a communication that just came in now via email. Um, and I, I forwarded that communication to all of you. Um, I'm not sure if you have an opportunity to perhaps quickly review, um, that, that email and, and perhaps to, to, that, that may generate some additional questions for the applicant.
This, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is the moderator Todd DeMay. Uh, if you could just have Mr. Pudlik read in for the record, since the public does not have the opportunity to read that comment. If you could just read in that comment, uh, into the record as part of this proceeding. Thank you.
I certainly can. Um, so the comment is from, let's see here, Rosemarie, uh, Rosemarie Duranis, and she indicates that she has further comment. Um, most comments have spoken to his good personality and also about fast drivers. 25 customers a week equals 50 and 50 and outbound a week at 52 weeks a year, which equals 2,600 car trips coming in and out. And no way to ensure is that it's that limit, which I find this, she finds this inappropriate. The applicant can meet people for a couple of hours to have customers pick up orders from a parking lot or similar. The applicant is not, uh, is not indebted to bake, I'm not impeded to bake, excuse me. It also appears from comments, many of the people are his customers, and I don't find that this is meaningful as safety concerns and traffic on the street. That was the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. That closes the public portion of this application. Thank you, Mr. Massey. And, uh, we will now deliberate on each of the three applications. The public portion of this hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to approve the application? Excuse me, motion to approve application 03-20, 90 North Main Street.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, discussion. Please raise your hand so I can recognize. I, I drove by this, uh, I drove by this, I drive by it all the time, but I drove by it today. It's, it actually is really difficult to see. Um, and it's a busy street corner. You don't want people turning around. Uh, the only, the only thing that, that occurs to me is, gosh, what if they rent another portion to another, um, to another use? We're going to have a chain of signs. Um, but even then, I think it's a busy enough corner that it can probably accommodate that. So, uh, those are my reflections. Mr. Di Matteo?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Definitely agree.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, you muted yourself, but we heard that you agree. Mr. Di Matteo?
Yeah, I, I was concerned about the size of this, uh, sign as well. Um, but in going, I guess if we, if, if there's another venue or another business that wants to place that signage, would they have to come in front of us to, to, to have that happen? Or now that the sign's approved, you know, we're, we're kind of, you know, that's it, you know, the sign's up and they can put up a couple of different businesses. If that's the case, I, I don't know. You, you mentioned other, right? The size of it. It seems like a pretty large sign.
But, but just a, a point of clarification. So I think if I, and Brian, I'll ask you to correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think this sign would be permitted perpetuity. Whether the business changes or not, we would still have, this sign has been approved. Subsequent businesses who want to add additional signs, if I understand correctly, would need to come before this board and file another application for variance. Mr. Public, if you can speak to that?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the sign that is being applied for tonight would run with the property. It would run in perpetuity if granted. Um, any future tenant in this building would have the opportunity to utilize that sign. If at some point our children's center shrinks their footprint in the building and the church wishes to add an additional tenant in the building, it's through the special use permit process, they would conceivably get approval to do that. Um, and regarding the sign that, that new tenant could potentially utilize a portion of that square footage in order to, in order to advertise their business. If they wish to add an additional sign or add additional square footage, that would bring that, that would bring them back to, to this board, uh, to request additional size or additional numbers of, of signs.
Mr. Public, what about lighting? What about, you know, times change, uh, OCC moves out, um, and now somebody wants to put in a neon sign there. Um, same square footage, same footprint. Would that require approval before this board unless we modify the approval?
I don't believe that would be permissible. Um, I believe the, the signs under this provision of the code are, are only allowed to be externally lit by lighting that is directed up at the sign. Um, and so there, we would not be able to allow an internally lit sign of any sort.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Any other comments from members of the board? Okay, sensing we are ready to vote, uh, Mr. Secretary, I'll ask you to do a roll call vote, uh, to accommodate our virtual, um, hearing here. So if you will please call the roll for voting.
Certainly. So in this particular, uh, so we have, we have some alternates that are going to be sitting on these applications. So I'm going to ask that, that Commissioner Harris sit on this first application. Um, so I will start with Commissioner Harris.
And I would be in favor of the application.
Thank you. So that's a yes. And, uh, we will go to Commissioner Di Matteo.
In favor?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Neville?
I vote aye.
And finally, uh, Mr. Chairman, Todd Doyle.
I vote in favor.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it appears that we have a unanimous approval here with, uh, with five yes votes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. So that motion carried, that application is approved. Can I get a motion to approve the application for 46 Pleasant Street, number 04-20?
They move. Seconded.
Thank you. Did you catch that, Brian? I, I didn't see who moved and who seconded.
Di Matteo. Di Matteo.
Di Matteo made the motion. Thank you.
Uh, discussion for this one. I, I'll say at the outset, I, I went by this property today and I actually had a discussion, um, with the applicant who was out there. And the, the issue is it's a narrow lot and it's very deep. So what, what, he doesn't have the, um, it doesn't look like he has the ability to expand this to a, what would be a normal sized square garage. So he's moving it all forward. And he also explained that by moving it forward, instead of widening the footprint, he doesn't have to pave an additional portion of his yard to expand the driveway. Cause if it was too wide, if it was much wider, he would have to expand the driveway to accommodate the width of the garage. And this way he can move the, um, he can keep the existing paving without giving up more of his narrow yard and move the garage forward. Um, eight feet is, uh, is a lot of feet, but it seems like he's got the space. The only way he can go, it seems to me is, is forward. But that was, that was my observation from a visit out to the property this afternoon. Commissioner Di Matteo?
Yeah, uh, Todd, uh, Commissioner, a question for you, since you were there just today. Uh, do you feel like it fits in with the landscape? Uh, I'm sort of struggling with this because, uh, you know, what's, it's, it's the hardship question, right? We ask ourselves. And, um, I was trying to hear, you know, what the hardship was in doing this. Uh, I can understand the reason, but I, just out of curiosity, what, you know, the size that he's trying to get to, does it, does it fit with the landscape there, I guess?
Yeah. And two observations, personal to me, right? Just
Yeah.
us. Um, observation number one is there's a neighbor two over and Commissioner Johnson, you may be able to see this on your satellite, neighbor two houses over to the north, who has a huge monstrosity of a garage, which is moved forward of the 30 yard setback because the lots are 200 feet deep. So if you move it forward, you, you're not subject to that coverage limitation, which is what this neighbor has done. Um, and I think this is a lot more compatible with kind of the spirit and, and architecture of the neighborhood than, than that one. So I think it's less egregious than something that conforms. And again, this yard is so deep that even with the, with the eight feet, I mean, you need eight feet, we can debate it, you know? Um, but even with that eight feet, you still have quite a distance from the, from what would be the front of the garage to the back of the home. Cause the, the lot is so deep. That was my observation. Commissioner Neville, don't forget to unmute.
Thank you. Um, I, you know, I did see the right house and I went back and, and looked on Google again. And I understand that the, that the garage is falling down and I understand that there's economic reasons why it doesn't make sense to repair them all. I think the problem is that it, right now, it's not just a two-car garage, but it's a two-car garage with a spacer in between the two doors. I mean, it looks like a substantial garage. I don't walk on people's properties. And so I'm looking at it down the driveway, but this looked like a substantial garage. And I, I think I'm concerned at the prospect that there is no real hardship here, except that he has a garage that deteriorated over time. And everybody's is going to. And then it becomes, well, if I have to repair it, I may as well make it a little bit bigger. Um, he could choose to rebuild on the exact same footprint. I was curious, Brian, if, if he chose to build on the exact same footprint, is he going to need a variance for a pre-existing?
I think I'm unmuted here. Um, no, he will not need a variance.
Because it's an outbuilding being built on the same pad?
That's correct. And I, I believe it would even be compliant with the regulations. Uh, 450 is the max and a 20 by 20 is 400 square feet. So I believe it would be zoning compliant regardless. Okay.
All right. And, and Brian, just for our, you know, because I, listen, a lot of us in West Hartford are in the same boat. You know, my garage is small. It's ostensibly a two-vehicle garage, but you need a can opener to get out of the car if you park it in the garage, right? Um, so Brian, can you remind us what the standard is for today's garage? If, if somebody were to apply for a garage today, what's the standard size, if you know?
We typically see garages, you know, I review a fair number of, of plans for new construction and, and typically the garages are a minimum of 24 by 24, occasionally even larger than that, but that's pretty typical of a two-car garage.
Right. And, and so, you know, what I saw today, um, Don, and again, my personal opinion, you know, we're all entitled to our own. Um, that strip in the middle is about a foot and a half, maybe it's two feet. So I think if you've got, you know, SUV number one, you know, Honda CRV in one and Honda, Honda CRV in the other, you, you still don't have enough room to fully open your door without dinging the door of the vehicle that's on the other side. Um, seems to me.
I, I don't disagree with you. I, I think the problem then is then they gotta change the regs, right? Then that's a problem for the town council. They need to change the, the regs. But if we need to find a hardship and we need to find a basis to issue the variance, I don't know. It, it can't be that, you know, it's outdated. And, and I don't blame him. I, I agree with him. I, I don't personally have a garage now, but my prior house did. I had the same problem. It was a two-car garage, but it was a one-car garage. But just like you said, everybody has that, which means everybody gets a bigger garage. And I just, I struggle with it. If there was no place else to put it or those kinds of things where we have property issues. But you're right. I mean, it's something that the, that they have to take up because the regs haven't stayed consistent.
I mean, in terms, the, the way, I guess I look at it a little differently. Not that I don't, like, I get it, right? Is there a hardship? The garage, a lot of people don't have garages. You don't have a garage. I mean, that makes sense. It's only a garage. On the other hand, his lot is situated in such a way that he's got two choices. Either he can move it forward of the, is it 30 feet, Brian? He can move it forward of the, Brian's shaking his head, yes. He can move it forward of the 30 feet and move it closer to the house and then have wasted space behind. Or, you know, he can move out, he's got, as Brian indicated, if there's a 450-foot limit, he can make it, I don't know, and he gets, he can get another 50 feet out of it. Um, and I think the fact of the matter is we don't drive Model As anymore. We don't drive Model Ts. Any car, you know, if you can, you could probably stretch it a little bit and say it's a safety thing. Gee, you don't, you wanna take your groceries out without slipping on the snow. You want to be in a covered area. Okay, it's a stretch, but, um, it's, it's not a usable garage. And I think that strip in the middle prevents it from being usable in as much as he can't put without modification, one door to park his car right in the middle.
You, you made, you made an interesting point, and maybe I didn't appreciate this because I couldn't see how much was room is in the back. But, but, um, Brian, let's assume that he did, in fact, could, could he move or relocate the garage such that he could get it 22 by 28 on the property and otherwise be in compliance with everything?
Yes.
Okay. Well,
Yeah, he could, he could shift the, essentially what he could do is shift the garage forward such that the portion of the garage that's behind the 30-foot mark is the maximum 450 square feet and the remainder of the square footage is forward to that line.
Okay. I, I guess I didn't understand that, that, that that was, okay, I get it now. So I almost think, I almost think that makes it more difficult.
So what, if we do the math on that, you know, I don't pretend to be a mathematician. It's too bad I'm on the record here, but he's got an extra 50 feet, right? Before he hits 150, before he hits the 450 limit. And he's asking for a 166 variance. That means that he needs, he would have to move the garage out of the 30-yard setback by 10 feet. He would have to move it forward 10 feet. So we would have a 10-foot wasteland behind the garage. And then he could do it without, he wouldn't need to be before the board.
Right. I, I, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not that makes the decision harder for me. Because that seems like such a waste of, that seems like such a, that, you know, that can't be the right answer. I understand it is, but
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Harris, I don't want to monopolize, Mr. Oh, God, I, you're asking good questions. Uh, just an observation. Uh, the, the problem is not with the width of the garage. The problem is with the depth of the garage. If all he did was use the same footprint and add two feet, it would fall within the 450, if my math is correct, which is always suspect, but it would fall within the, the, uh, the 450-foot, uh, uh, exception for building in the, in the setback. So really what we're talking about is the additional eight feet of depth.
Yes.
Well, so if he, so if he truncated that to 24 feet, which I think is what Brian said is standard, in the depth, does this go away? It's really a question for Brian, I think, because it requires math.
Trying to unmute here, sorry. Um, no, it doesn't go away. That puts him at 528. So that's, that's not going to be, that's not going to work.
Commissioner Harris, please.
What, Don, if I understand your question, are you saying 24?
What, Don, if I understand your question, are you saying 24 feet of depth or width?
Depth.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, 166 is a, is a big number because if we do, if we do our square roots, it's 12 by 12 is 144. So it's like 12 and a half by 12 and a half. That's a lot of square, like, that's not small. That's not insignificant. It's, it's, it's a big number.
I mean, the, the way I, the way I looked at it is that he's going from 400 square feet to 616 square. So he's, he's going more than 50% of the existing. He's expanding it. That's a big one. And part of my hesitation and rubs here is, somebody is going to come back and point at this application as a basis upon which somebody else should get a variance. And I think we need to look at all of the, the options, because the, I'm troubled by the idea that if he moves it forward, he doesn't need a variant. And I understand it creates a dead spot in his backyard and it's not ideal. I get all of that. But if there's a way for him to do it without a variance, I don't know that I can give him somebody a variance. But I, but I've monopolized enough. I've covered my issues. I don't want to hold anybody else up.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thanks. Just really quickly, I kind of agree with Don on this one because of the fact that we're talking about dead space, which I fully respect and understand. And I just think that we've seen so many of these applications where I understand the dead space issue, but he has so much space on that driveway, just based on the satellite vision I've been looking at. And it just seems like there is such a workable solution. And I also agree with the earlier point about amending the regulations or updating that there have been other applications where we've also provided denials, but then that gives an opportunity for council to kind of, you know, reinforce it so that we're not forced with creating this precedent now where everyone's going to come forward trying to modify to be an existing modified garage, which I do sympathize with. And this is definitely a tough one. But at this point, I think I do agree with Don right now.
Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I, I don't mean to be a dead horse, but he can, he can build a 22 foot, if, if his concern is opening the garage, the doors to the cars in the garage, he can build the 20 by 20, the 22 foot wide, 20 feet deep, and it would meet the regulations. He wouldn't have to have a special exception.
No, I, I was just thinking that myself. If, if the, if the hardship is width, he has, he has the width, he's going to get as wide as he's going to get. The only other thing that I still grapple with, although I'm leaning toward where you are, Don, the only other thing that I still grapple with is, it's not like he can move it forward four feet to get four feet more depth. He, he still has to move it forward the eight feet if he wants to get more depth. You know what I mean? It's not a one for one.
I, I do. I, I think the place where, I, I do. The ones that, to me, that are, are more troubling is when somebody comes and says, you know what? I'm going to expand my existing garage. I've got the slab. I've got everything. But it's, from what I'm hearing, it's going to be all new construction anyway. So it's, it, there's not even a, I don't think that's a, a salient factor, but even if it was, it doesn't seem particularly relevant here.
I'm, I'm leaning with Don and Mike. And I, I agree. It's just, there's other options there. With this, I feel bad about that, but, you know, and that we can't accommodate this, this resident. But, uh, it just, it just, it's not making sense to me. And then the number that stood out is that he's trying to increase the, the footprint by 50% from 400 to 616. So that's, you know, especially when he, he can do that within, within the guidelines of the codes by moving it. Even, even granted, he's going to have dead space.
Just want to check one more thing. And Brian, if you know, please speak up. Is he at 20 by 20 now or 22 by 20 now? He's at 20 by 20 now?
He stated on the record, he was 20 by 20.
So if he goes 22, he's still, he can go 22, but he can't go 22 by 22?
No, he cannot. He can go 22 and a half by 22, by 22, excuse me, 22 and a half by 20.
So he could widen it by two and a half feet?
I don't know.
It's a bummer. It's a bummer. But I think, you know, I think, I, I think I'm going over to your side as well. There are other options here. And if we start, start allowing garages, it's good for the builder's lobby, but probably not for, probably not for West Hartford, right? We'll have these things, monstrosities all over the place. Even recognizing how ugly that huge garage is, two doors up, move forward off the setback, things horrendous, ergantuan. But, uh, but yeah, what's, what's the hardship? It's a garage? He can get it as wide as he wants it if, if width is the issue. Okay. Sensing we're ready to vote, Mr. Secretary, if we'll please do a roll call vote.
Yes, so we will have Commissioner Morales sitting on this application. And so I will, I will ask Commissioner Di Matteo.
We're voting, right?
Yes, we're voting.
Nay.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Morales?
No.
Commissioner Neville?
Ne, nay.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, Todd Doyle.
No.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we, uh, we have not approved this application as everybody has voted no.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Now like to call for a motion for our third application, 36 Haynes Road, application number five dash two zero. Got a motion?
I'll make a motion, so moved.
I'll second.
Perfect. There's Johnson and Di Matteo. Thank you. It's a new one.
Yeah.
You know, look, it's a one year, it's a one year approval. You know, we get to revisit this if, if it turns out there are multiple complaints that, that all these warnings about 2,600 cars driving up and down, running over small children and animals comes to pass. But this is a new, this is a new ordinance. This is a new law. And I, I think we're duty bound to, again, my personal opinion, I think we're duty bound to, let's give this a go. We have this new statute. We should at least give this person an opportunity to try out the new statute.
Is this the first one? This is, right? This, or are there any, there aren't any other, okay. Are there any other applications in the pipeline that you're aware of, Brian?
So, let me, let me be clear. So we've had three, I believe, cottage food applications, only one of which, Mr. Massey, is the one that's, that's coming before you to ask for customer delivery or customer pickup at the house. The other cottage food operations are not interested in having customers come to their house. They are distributing however they want to distribute.
But, but you've told us there's no prohibition in the, in the relevant statute against picking up at the house.
Correct. West Hartford has decided to add this additional layer of approval for those applicants that wish to do that.
Okay, so it falls to us. Okay. Commissioners?
Okay, I, I, you know, what I didn't, I understand the concerns about the raw numbers, but, but, but we have tutors and student, you know, SAT people and tailors and, who are doing way more traffic, I think, than this. Therapists, yoga, they do, they do probably more than 15 clients a week. So the math, although I don't dispute it's a big number, we let it happen all the time. So I don't, I don't know what the difference is. They're allowed to do it and they've included it now as part of the group. I think they get their crack, just like everybody else. Unless I like Brett.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. No, I, I agree as well. And I think the timetable that they're at, the physical presence should also be taken into account as well. You know, it's not like they're spending the entire day around where it's going to cause traffic to be bottlenecked. I feel like it's sort of a pretty quick in and out operation, just based on the description.
Commissioner Di Matteo?
No, I agree. I was just, um, I was asking about the added layer, which is, which is, what was that, Brian? The added layer from, from the ordinance you were saying, is that the delivery portion where you, you have the option to have people come to the house to pick up for this specific type of cottage industry, whatever?
Yes, it's, the added layer is, the added layer is, is this process, the special exception process.
Right. Yeah. And I, I agree with Don. I mean, you have, you have tutors, you have, you have
Size therapists.
Yeah, exactly. You have, you have different entities that have folks coming in, in and out. It's probably, it's probably not going to be any different than some of those, the ones that we approve every year.
So now, Brian, as a matter of process, if we revisit this next year, what are, what would be our options at that time? Do we have an option to renew for another year? Does it go to three years at that point? We have?
It's, it's completely up to your discretion as a board. Typically, special exceptions are renewed for three years the second time around. But if, if there's reason to restrict that to one year, or, you know, you could, you could place any conditions on the application that you, that you see fit based on the concerns raised, if applicable.
Right. And, and I think, with, with thanks for that reminder, I think we should, we should probably note in the applicant, in our approval, that it, that it's a modification, that we're approving a modification of the application as filed, such that it envisions three days per week?
Right. Oh, yes.
So maybe you can help direct us as to how we do that procedurally, Brian?
Um, well, I have, I've, I've made a note that there's, uh, that there's a three day, three table week modification, perhaps. Somebody can just make an amended motion to indicate that there's a, that there's a change. Or just, or just add that condition, if you wish. You can make an amended motion stating that, uh, that you want to add the condition of three days per week. And I also added 10, 10, maximum of 10 people per day.
So what, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Johnson, you probably know way better than any of us, the rules of order to do it. So I say fire away.
I'm going to take a crack at it. So as a friendly amendment, if all agree, I'd like to modify my motion and Di Matteo's second to include a 10 day, uh, 10 person maximum three day a week cap to the application, if all board, if all commission members agree.
Great.
Mr. Doug Neville, agreed. Thank you. Okay. This is Todd Doyle, Chair, agreed.
Di Matteo, agreed.
Agreed.
Harris agrees as well?
Yes.
I agree.
Will that do it? Is that sufficient? Mr. Moderator?
Uh, Mr. Secretary, Brian?
Uh, no, Mr. Moderator, who had specifically requested that we do roll call votes. I think that does it.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's all the commissioners.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then, and Commissioner Harris would be, would be the, would be the voting commissioner on this particular one. So you've, you've at this point agreed to modify the, uh, the application pursuant to the three day per week and 10, 10 max clients per day. And now if you are ready to do so, uh, to move into the, the voting, uh, voting on the amended motion.
Sensing we're ready to vote on the amended motion, seeing no further comment from the members of the commission, uh, Mr. Secretary, would you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Di Matteo?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Neville?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, Todd Doyle?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it, uh, we have five yes votes, which means we have a unanimous approval.
Hey, congratulations, Mr. Massey. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we are, do we have minutes to approve, Mr. Secretary?
We do. We have minutes from January and I'm actually just going to transmit those minutes to you now, um, via email, if my computer will allow me to do so. Okay, so I've just sent those off to you guys via email, um, if you need an opportunity to review them, um, before we vote on those.
They're also, they're also on the website. They're also posted on the website.
Thank you, Brittany. Excuse me, just for the record, the commissioners that attended the January meeting, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Doyle, Commissioner Di Matteo, Commissioner Neville, and Commissioner Morales.
Hey, Brian.
Interesting. Um, yeah, I wonder if, I, I can't recall. I wonder if you may have, if, if you may have jumped in late that day. And I think we only had one application that day, so you didn't actually get to hear the application.
I remember this meeting, although I'm still waiting for the minutes to come through. I, I should just check the website, right, Brittany? Have you all gotten Brian's email yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
That sounded promising.
Here it is, here it is.
If I could just talk also to the, to the other commissioners and everybody while he's looking at that. I, I wonder if, um, if it's time for us to send a letter to the town council about recommending a revision or at least looking at the limits of the numbers relative to garages. Uh, we've, in my, as long as I've been on, we sent a letter once. Um, it was a, uh, it was a store that we wanted to do, I won't bore you with it, but we sent a, a letter. And I, I don't think now is the time to decide that. I may move at the next meeting, but I wanted to just give everybody a heads up on, um, and just to think about it for the next month, about whether it's time to say to them, because it's above our pay grade, and just say, think about it or don't, but you're, we think you're doing a disservice to some of the people in the, in the town. We can figure out the language. Um, so.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be enormous, right? We just need, we just need a little bit, maybe to accommodate a 24 by 24, you know, standard sized garage, right?
Yep. I agree. Whatever, I think the answer is, my guess is they just are not aware of it. It was the same problem we had with this other one. They just, they've got enough things to deal with. I'm sure the size of garages is not high in their food chain, but it's important to a lot of people. And I think, you know, it's reasonable. So they can decide what to do with it.
Okay, um, motion, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for January 2020?
So moved.
Don Neville, so moved.
This is Lynda second.
Okay, no, Linda, we're going to put you first and we're going to have Don second. All right. Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Public, would you like to take a roll call vote?
Yes, please. And I'm going to have Commissioner Morales on the, on the vote here. So we'll start with Commissioner Di Matteo.
Yeah, yes.
Um, let's see here. Commissioner Morales? Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Neville?
Yes.
And Commissioner Di Matteo?
Uh, you need to unmute.
Yep.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think I already got you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Doyle?
Yes, approve.
Thank you. Okay, so that is, uh, that's four yeses.